Good morning. Let's call the special meeting of the Yakima School Committee, June 24th, 2015, 8:00 in the morning. We'll call it to order at this time. And let's start with Senator New.
I pledge allegiance to the republic of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, do we have any adjustments to the agenda?
Yes, we should put 4.1, additional executive session, same status session, MRSI, 4.5, since it's a personal.
4.1?
Yep.
Okay. Okay. Any other adjustments? No? Any comments from the public? Okay, then we're going to move right into a pre-K discussion, which is the reason for the public part of this meeting this morning. And I'll let Superintendent let us up to date on Mary to Mary to.
Well, we met, I don't even know what day, Monday. Okay, I've been out to New York and back, so I don't know what day it is. Hardly any sleep. It was a small gathering of some of the pre-K committee members, and we were discussing what to do because, number one, the numbers had gone up to 27 pre-K kids. When we originally met, I mean, I remember back, I think it was January, February, and I don't know if we even had 10 or something, and we were like, it bothered me that we might do a program with only 10 kids, and so it wasn't worth it. So now that it's up to 27, it gives us other things to think about. So we had the one teacher issue and the 16 kids, and then the whole money issue based on income, and so we were trying to figure out what to do. And that's what we basically discussed. We were just going around trying to come up with ideas of how to figure this pre-K program out. It was done hastily, yes, but we wanted to get it done this year. So that's what happens. Mistakes happen, or things are overlooked, and decisions are made. However, there are always solutions, and we can change things as we go forward. We had discussed that there was some money that the town would not accept unless we went to a special town meeting. So there was money that we were going to move forward to the town, and we haven't yet. So we were wondering, maybe we could use that money if we needed to fund for a second teacher. This is something that we do with the kindergarten teacher. If we go over 20, we say we need two teachers, and we have to find the funds for that. So this is kind of, I think, feel the same scenario where we have 27, we have 16, that a teacher can do with a special, or an ed tech in the room. So we just decided that, basically, well, we went over 16, so that means two teachers. And that's kind of where we stand, and we needed really a vote, because I believe we voted to move the 60,000. When there was 120, I'm just rounding it, when there was 120,000, Kevin made the motion that we end up doing 60,000 for whatever they felt necessary, and 60,000 would go back to the town. So we went to the town meeting, we couldn't do it on the floor there, and so now we have that 60,000 still. However, I believe we voted.
That money, yeah. The town needs to get that money back.
Right, but I felt they didn't take it, they didn't let us move it forward, so what do we do now? So, yeah, I guess it's going to be a board decision on what to do. Is there anything else you want to add?
All right, just summary, so everybody knows what options are out there, okay? Because she said, we met on Monday, which is basically staff, and then Mary is a pre-K representative. The other people that were there were pre-K people that are on staff.
And we had the pre-K teacher there.
Because once the committee did its work, now it's up to the school to figure out how to make things happen. So we met, as she said, and I suggested that there are other options, and I'll say that those options are here, because a lot of school members were there. The options are, initially, it was proposed to have 16 students, which would include one teacher and one ed tech. And we determined a way to do that without essentially having a neutral budget change. It's grown beyond 16, so the options become less. You can stay with the 16, that's option one, with the ed tech. Option two is, you could vote for a program that's half-day, half-day. And option three would be add another teacher and associate ed tech, et cetera. And when I say et cetera, that includes making sure the other group space is up to the same requirements as the original space. Those come with costs. The committee, or the people that were there Monday, trying to brainstorm, we met for three hours, I think it was three hours, felt that a full-day, five-day program is the program that should be offered to students to address continuity of program. We could add to this too, so they could feel. Is that somewhat of the pretty much? So that was the will of that group, but it really rests in the school committee's decision on which option they want to pursue. The group leaned towards having a pre-K, additional pre-K teacher because of, there is a policy that affects kindergarten. If you exceed 20 kids, the policy, it's almost books here in the act, is add another teacher. People also should know that pre-K is not mandated by the state. K through 12 is. Pre-K is up to the will of the local community. So the policy, and I'm going to speak for Kevin, Kevin can't be here, as you guys know, because he's a family member, but he also stated that he was in support of following the intent of the other policy, poor pre-K population also, which would mean adding a teacher. I'm speaking for him.
Yes, he sent that to us.
So that's that. Now, those are the three options, so you need to know cost. You already know the cost for the 16 program, one teacher and an ed tech, that's basically neutral, we're all ready to cover the budget. Half-day, that could possibly be done the same way, with a zero budget change. To add a teacher, that requires some action that needs to take place from the school committee and the town, because we have a budget that's been voted on to a limit. In order for us to go above that limit for the calendar fiscal year 2015-16, there needs to be some action of some sort, okay? The cost, it appears, and this has been really scrambling since then, Shannon, the pre-K teacher, she was at the meeting also on Monday, as reference, I said, we need to go through the spreadsheet that we have for equipment, et cetera, for the room, and figure out what else we need in order to have that other space properly fitted. She did that, she got it to me last night quite good. I went through it, and the total comes to 483285. However, on Monday morning, before we even met, the wall between the two rooms was already taken up, which was probably the original plan. So we're going to have to, if that space is going to be there, we have to do something with that opening. I spoke with Andrew Monday afternoon, around 3 o'clock, and said, you're not going to like this, but you just hauled everything out. I said, so, here's the deal. And I said, what would it take? Door, resheet rocket, whatever. He says, oh, I'll figure it out. If we just sheet rocket over, he's guessing 350, about something like that, that's a guess. I have to finalize that today. The other thing is, in the thing that Shannon provided, she says additional costs, but I have to look online to exactly what that combination is, but I think it could be as much as $700 for the cost side. So we're looking at possibly 5832 to have the space. Now, the ed tech, we met, Tricia and Rachel and I met this morning to look at how we could reallocate ed tech to address the need, because the ratio is eight to one, we have attempts with 27 students. We have one space ready, we're going to need a teacher and an ed tech to have the other space ready. We think we have a plan to address the ed tech portion, to address the other eight to one. Now we have to address the teacher cost. If we hire a teacher that's new to teaching, and has single benefits, it's going to run about 45,000 to 1,000. If the person we hire has two or three years, four years, five years experience, and they have a family, it could go as high as, we're guessing, close to 6,000. Okay? So there's the range, somewhere between 45, 2, and 60-ish. I think that's all the information.
Well, the only other thing was, Brian Hughes was in the meeting, and she's been the contact person, calling parents, understanding if the parents live here, because she gets the documentation. But the ones who were basically told it's full day, the 16 who got in, were told it was a full-day program. She said, who's going to call them to say it's now a half-day program? Because some people have already rearranged their schedules, knowing what September will bring, and they're going to be there, you know, know their kid is, say, in school from 8:30 to 2:30. You know, so we already promised, you know, it's definitely stated to these people that they're there for a full day. So how do you pull away full day? Some of those kids may have, parents may have wanted a two- or three-day-a-week program. Very few, is what Brian had said. So it was, you know, yes, we could bring all the pre-K parents in the room and try to shuffle it out and figure things out. I don't know.
I think the intent from the beginning was all day.
All day, all.
We kind of shuffled it all, that's what it was, all day. My other question is, when they filled out applications, wasn't there a cutoff time of when they could have the application in?
Yeah, but only if they were called for those first 16.
So we actually had 27 to begin with?
So as the waiting list has grown, they didn't meet that same cutoff?
It was only not in the first 16.
But they're on the waiting list.
But I thought that it didn't matter, I thought there was an application.
But it did. That's what I'm saying, but it did. Only the first 16 were told of the deadline.
And you didn't know that there was only going to be, oh, I see what you mean, so it didn't matter after that? We could end up with 30?
Right.
Which, Rupert's rings a good point, another year, then have an official application, definitely being 30.
Right, so this was just kind of a...
Well, the other thing is, if we're going to, if we do vote to hire an additional teacher, which seems at this point to make the most sense, we have to be sure that that person is certified also for kindergarten, because the following year, we're going to have to have two kindergarten teachers anyway.
The state requirement would be pre-K 3 certification would be the typical.
Pre-K 3?
Would be the typical. Most pre-K teachers don't have certification to eighth grade, most of them, in the state of Maine, it's a pre-K 3. So that would be very standard.
Because the following year, regardless of what we do, the following year, we're going to have well over 20 in kindergarten, so we're going to have to have the two kindergarten teachers anyway. Yes.
As far as the pre-K, and wouldn't it be just as easy to create a list of questions, like, did you want only two to three days a week? Did you want five days a week? Did you want four days? Couldn't you create a list of questions, and then call each family and say that you have the option of doing, you know, two teachers or whatever? Just to get a clear idea of what each family wanted, and letting them know that it doesn't mean that they wouldn't get in, or that they will get in, that you're just trying to get a very clear idea of what people want.
Brian was going to do that, I believe.
Except.
Well, the problem is, the state requires that they have 10 hours a week, so that would be more than, that would be more than like two days. The state requires that they have 10 hours a week, and it needs to be a continuum program. In other words, it's not like DK, where you can come in for, it's, there's a program in place.
The state requires 10 hours a week as a minimum. You can do that in a two-day program. However, we met on Monday, and also earlier on when we did the application, the group of money clearly stated, and correct me if I'm wrong, you three that were there, four that were there, that they wanted a full-day, five-day program for continuity's point of view, and the new pre-K teacher, she made a pretty compelling case of why, development and to learning.
So that will cut out a few people that only wanted two or three days for their kids to come. Less than your 27, unless they changed their mind.
That's correct. And so we did ponder everything you just said.
And practically, how could we possibly manage it? And it really became overwhelming.
But it definitely wouldn't be less than 16.
No.
So you're still talking two teachers.
There still will be two teachers. Well, that was my other question. Is it, you said that you had opened up the space down here. Is it too much to have all those kids in one big space with two of your teachers?
There's a square footage requirement, and this space, it's 35 square feet per kid, and each room is about 800, and for 16 kids, each room is 560 square feet, so you can't put them in one.
So it just needs to be closed off again a little bit?
Okay, I don't know if you know where, Marilyn Young's room, and that other room. There's an open now of about eight feet.
Square footage, it works? Management of 24 four-year-olds?
It's like croutons cats.
Oh, yeah.
Probably the reality would be, there would be a class potentially of 16 and 8, and probably something like 12 and 12. And then if you've got another kid that moved in mid-year.
But the existing space will still work in some way.
Square footage, it does.
Yeah, absolutely.
Amy. That basically, I think my question is pretty much answered by, it's definitely five full days, and if you want anything less, that's...
We have to draw a line. You can't accommodate everybody's whatever. What I mean is, this is for the benefit of the kid.
Let her finish her explanation.
I have a four-year-old, and I didn't send in the stuff because he's already registered in this other preschool program. And that was back in January. And then this all came about, and I was on the committee board, and, you know, I'm for it, but not the five full days. So I thought, oh, well, if he went to his preschool three days a week, he could come here two days a week. Originally, that was like, yeah, we're not going to turn anybody down, and then that changed, which I understand. So is that an option or no?
Right now, we cannot see how that can be an option. Especially this first year.
Even two full days?
So...
Because it has to be five full, right?
We couldn't come to that conclusion, and you know how I feel about this, that I would have loved to have every combination possible to suit everybody's needs. But practically, when we were talking about, you know, having continuity, even Monday through Friday, if you have kids popping in two days a week, they didn't get Monday's lesson, but they got Tuesdays, you know, or they weren't here since last Tuesday. Shannon explained to us, you know, again, how she runs the program, and this is a highly skilled preschool teacher. And we realized that that was one piece of the options that we had to, we had to remove from our responsibility.
I've never, you know, all my kids have gone to preschool, and it's always been, you know, Tuesday, Thursday, one year, and Monday, Wednesday, Friday. So I'm not super familiar with all of this. I know St. Thomas, and that's obviously private, does, they can choose. You know, they do five full days, they do two half-days, they do three half-days.
With same kids, same group, same teacher?
Yep. Yep, but you can kind of, you know, not that the parents are choosing, but it's flexible. But again, that's a private, you know, it's a Catholic school, so I don't know, you know, I was kind of hoping here, you know, back when this was, we were originally going, I talked to you about it, I was like, that would be awesome if he could come here two full days and go to his preschool, you know, where he's accustomed to, and I've already paid for a Monday, Wednesday, Friday.
Yes.
There's three things, you made me think of a couple of those. One is, Child Development Services provides service for any child under five years of age, and there's a child finding requirement. This actually helped us address kids that we would not have known and be able to address. By doing it, as they seem to be leaning, it will help Child Development Service better meet the needs of those kids, because they'll be able to probably do it all right here in-house, instead of parents having to truck them.
Which I understand, I do understand that.
So there's one thing. The other thing is, regarding, you said St. Thomas, I think you said?
Yeah.
They have the program. We had to pick a curriculum that we had to follow. Curriculum is based on very, kind of, you'd go along like that, so the two-day, three-day, five-day thing.
Well, our preschool doesn't work on them as well.
I'm not, I'm just going by what the state told us, we had to use, well, we had, it was a choice, we had a couple different curriculums, but they really kind of leaned us towards a thing called the HALL, which is very comprehensive. And then, and the whole point was, what's that to lead to? Those two things lead to better learning environment, addressing kids' needs, if they have special needs, addressing them ahead of time before they get here, and the payoff. I was talking to Susan Reed, or email to Susan Reed, yes, they lose the D O E person, and says that you will see that you won't have the services two, three years out that you would have had if you didn't address it now. So this is a pay now, save later kind of thing. And then the other thing is, to the board, they've mentioned this at the time we presented pre-K, this will affect our funding formula, our reimbursement rate. It's an average over two years, so be it a couple of years out before we see it, so you can't really say, is the money going to be there next year? Piece of it will be, no, part of it won't be. The community should know that by adding this pre-K, if it is 27 kids, that's over 10% of our school population next year. 10%. In a, I guess you could say, nine-grade or 10-grade school now, because it's kindergarten, first second of the year, so you have 10 grades of it. So it's 10% of our, maybe it's high 12%. That's going to also help us with our funding rate, because some of these children who identify as pretty reduced, which will keep our, potentially our reimbursement, remember that $107,000? For a rate, number two kids, this potentially could keep us above that. This is good.
Diane, I guess I just would like a little bit of a clarification about, if we already have one teacher, 16 kids, I guess if parents, I guess going back to the five-day, five-day versus three-day, two-day thing, if we had another teacher, couldn't the rooms be set up differently, where one room focuses on one, and another room focuses on another? If families wanted to have that choice, I guess I'm not sure about why that couldn't happen.
That was rather, I mean, is that what you want to address? In census force?
Well, I know from our general conversations at the very beginning, you're talking about less than five families that want the partial day. So we're still, by going whole day.
And it's 27. And that's what I had for about, no, it's about five.
So it's still a large proportion is going all day. But the thing is, we can't control, we don't have a bus system going out to the pre-K, so we can't control what the parents will do. If the parents decide, I'm only bringing my kid Tuesday, Thursday, then we can't control that, and the kid comes Tuesday, Thursday. There's no truancy.
There is no truancy?
There's no truancy at pre-K, so it's not like you're going to get letters home, where's your kid?
It doesn't mean, it doesn't mean I won't be checking why your kid's not here, but the power of the truancy law changes with age. We all know that, actually, you could keep your kid home until seven years of age, according to the... Shh. I don't want you to. And I'm, you know, but, you know, if your child is missing, I'm going to want to know why. I want to know your child is okay, I want to know your child is safe.
Well, so if somebody says, well, you know what, from now on, you're only going to see them Tuesday, Thursday, do they get to stay in the program, and you just can stuff that?
I don't think I'm prepared to answer that today, but I'm...
Because you don't want it to happen.
I don't want it to happen, and I want the program to be successful. I want to take care of all kids. That's ultimately what I want.
I really think that we need parents to commit to the five-day program if they want to be in it, and we're making this kind of an investment. I think the parents need to commit to five days, because it makes more sense. Yes.
So I totally agree with the five-day program, and I think that another thing you need to take into consideration, if you broke it up, how would you be able to serve the kids who can't do lunch? How would you be able to serve them their lunch, you can't do lunch for two sessions? I've done a double session preschool, we worked for Head Start, and it didn't work. We missed out on feeding them, we fed them one meal, we were lucky to do breakfast or lunch. And I think that the five-day program, if you had people dropping in and out, I think it would affect the overall dynamic of the entire class.
And they go to kindergarten.
I think it wouldn't benefit their child, because bouncing, you know, I have friends these days, but then I'm here the other days, and they're with a different group of friends, it's really difficult. I've seen it with the kids coming in and out, I think that would be very difficult. I think that would be a way to address it with families, that the overall dynamic and your child's social, emotional development and preparation for kindergarten is huge.
And the preschool teacher, my day, totally.
And I totally, I have confidence that she understands that, and will be able to address that within the curriculum too. I think that's a huge piece of that. And I know when we had talked at one of the other meetings, it was discussed, well, if it's going to be a full-day program, you have to offer some sort of rest time in there as preschool teacher and parent. Typically, after lunch, that's a great time to offer that. So I guess my other question is, when we're looking at instructional time, 10 hours a week, most of that instructional time you would consider to be in the morning, so that once lunch happens, would parents, would that be an option? That parents could come and decide to pick up their child in the afternoon during rest time, or for less instructional time?
I think the 10 hours is a minimum required by the state, not necessarily that they're only going to get 10 hours of instruction.
Yeah, on the website, the state, like, you know, the minimum is 10, but you can offer more, and I'm just curious if that would be an option for parents, to opt to be able to do the half-day?
Again, I wouldn't encourage, but I think even when we talked all-day kindergarten, my twins are 17, so we're talking 12 years ago, that was a big concern even for them, you know. And so we built in the nap time, the rest time, and found kids, and parents with the same concerns, you know, half-day is enough for my kid. And we found kids, as the month went on, adjusted accordingly, and didn't want to miss out on anything. So if ours is after rest time, they don't want to miss it.
And that's why I totally agree with the full day, because by the time you get to the end of the school year, I would like for my child to be prepared for that full-day kindergarten experience, as opposed to coming into you in the fall and being a mess after lunch. I think that's, I think you can really build on that, and I think the age of four is a developmentally appropriate place to kind of build on it. But I'm wondering if parents could, if that could be an option that we discussed at the beginning of the school year, like...
That's what I was asking, a discussion is the place.
Yeah, can we do, can my child come for the full five days yet, leave after nap time until December, or, you know, something like that?
I would definitely trust Shannon to have the conversation as time goes on.
How, like, is it, is it a possibility for those that are doing preschool elsewhere to be involved in any aspect of it? We, I know, you know, we've gone to BAM forever, but is there a way for Colin to be with the kids he is going to go to school with, where...
Well, I'm thinking the specials, why can't they go to art, music, and gym? Now, the other thing is, do the music, art, and gym have to be pre-K certified to...
I asked that question, they do not. But we would always send the ed tech with them, so again, the ratios would stay the same, the support person would be there.
But just like a homeschool parent would bring them in for the specials.
That's kind of what I, yeah, that's exactly what I'm thinking. I just feel like, you know, we're, we can't now commit to the five full days unless I lose money. Unfortunately, not going to do that, but...
You can't get a refund in any manner, suppose, or something else?
Nope, you just want to send in your, you know, deposit, and you don't go back. It's a deposit to hold your spot, and I understand that, you know.
I would say, Amy, at this point, because we're still learning as we go, I am open to that conversation. I am open to that conversation. I don't think it has to be decided how that would work today, but I definitely think, again, you know me, if I could stay after school and watch them and play with them on the weekends, and, you know, I would do whatever I could for the kids.
I know. I was here so often, I feel, you know, with him in tow.
I know, I know, he rules the school.
But I would love for him to be able to be involved in a few of the aspects of the preschool.
So the question is, how can we, how can we help those kids who may not be in the all-day program acclimate, so that, again, starting from in kindergarten, that there is that comfort, that I know you, and I think we can have that conversation.
So he's not that one kid that walks in like he's moved from Florida, you know? You're not know anybody, but you know, with that.
And this is a conversation, I think, that needs to happen after school gets started, after the schedule has been set up, after the pre-K people, teacher or teachers have gotten to know the kids, and gotten to know what the schedule's going to be, then I think that would be a time when we should be able to reach out to kids like yours, and maybe some others, and say, okay, this is when, this is when our kids, this is when pre-K is having music, this is when pre-K is having art, this is when pre-K is having gym. And that gives them the chance to, even though they're not a part of the educational program that we're providing, it gives them the socialization, and it gives them the chance to, you know, mingle and mix. I think that's good.
I'm not trying to interrupt the conversation, I just want to make sure, this is probably going to come up. If there's, let's just say there's 26 people, technically, we have space for 32. Someone's going to ask, either locally or from a surrounding area, can they tuition a kid? You have to make a decision.
Well, that, one of my things on my notes is...
And then I would have to go, what is the tuition rate? I'm not sure if it would be the same as...
Well, we'll just ask Amy.
No, but I meant, there is a state-set rate for tuition, if you go to another school, like high school or another middle school, whatever, but I don't know how that works in the pre-K, where it's not required by state law.
My thing is, I don't think, if we're at 27, we cut, you know, we have to say, and we have to vote on, that there's a cutoff of 32, because I don't want 33 kids coming Because I don't want thirty three kids coming and then we need a third pre-K teacher. It just can't happen this year. The way things are, we have to say, you gotta be kidding. Thirty two, that's crazy.
I think we should still adjust acting kids.
But anyway, and, and I don't feel we should take from the slot twenty eight, twenty nine, thirty, thirty one, thirty two and say, we can tuition kids. I think we need to keep the slots open for our acting kids. And now if we say, um, cause if we, we don't keep it open, then how do you add the other people who are out there?
What if somebody moves in with one tablet and a four years old? Don't say, no, but I mean, we need, we need those spaces for our long kids.
Yes, I, I agree. I think Mary made a good point. So at this point, because we are so high in our numbers for acting, this year, taking care of acting is more than enough. If we have a few open slots beyond our MAPS that allows us the flexibility of having conversations of kids who are not in the program full day, how can we take care of them? But also allows us to go through the school year without already starting at MAPS and having that child moves in January, you know, saying that we can't accommodate them. So I, I, I agree. I think that's a great idea. And I know that there's a lot of policy that has to be created going forward. So we have a plan in place for future years. But right now, you have to do the best we can with what we've got. I'm so excited that we've got this opportunity for kids at all.
It's unfortunate. I mean, it's fortunate and it's unfortunate that this all happened so quickly that the policy committee hasn't had a chance to develop a pre-K policy, which will be, I can guarantee you, on the top of the policy list. Right, right away. Jeanette's gonna take care of that.
But we also have the space right now. Beyond this, we don't even have the space for pre-K. After these two rooms are, are, you know, cause going beyond these numbers also means square footage is an issue. So we have to look-
But the policy will address, how many? The policy will address acting only. The policy will address all, all of these questions that are coming up. The policy can address, um, bringing in homeschool. Do you wanna put that? Cause if you've got them home, you're homeschooling them on those days he's not in kindergarten. Will, will address, can address that, bringing them in for special, for a special place. So the policy-
Hasn't been formed yet.
Hasn't been, hasn't been written yet. Hasn't been done yet. But if, if it was in place, we wouldn't be here right now. We would be a lot better off in a lot of things. But it will be, it will be in place and all these things are gonna have to be included in it. Some parts of it, people might like, some parts of it people might not. But that's the way it is with all of our policies. But I think the policy will reflect that we want to be totally fair to all the parents who have preschool kids that are eligible for preschool and that we wanna provide services for, for all of them.
Because didn't we do this because of the report you got from the state saying if we get into this right now and the kids who picked up with disabilities, they will pay?
That, that, that's on the books already.
Right, that's what I'm saying. But if we waited, the school would have to, I mean, they would-
That's correct. That's age five.
Let's say, let's say a child needs hearing aids, but they didn't get identified at age four. They get identified halfway through kindergarten.
Right.
They get to hearing aid, school slash special needs program picks it up. However, we've lost that learning tendency, you know, assimilate speech and et cetera that could have taken place, which is just gonna be better off for learning for all of them.
Right.
So I just wanna, here's what I think you have to come up with today. One, you're gonna have to come up with a motion, what you wanna do for the program in terms of positioning on it. Next one, a motion on capping the size for the remainder of the year. Another one, motion that's only acting. Those obviously would be inside a policy in the future, but I think they need to be officially stated now so that should something else happen, can you think of anything else that might?
Well, I'd say somewhere along the line.
Then this isn't the tuition issue, the truancy issue, so I don't see that, I mean, for here.
The expectation is that we're developing a program.
Could you make a policy around that?
I think, can we put, can we have in the policy someplace that the parents whose children are in the program are committing to a five day program? Can we have that in the policy?
Yeah, but we're not writing policy now. We're just trying to define-
I know, but that's what-
But for our, our policies, I'm making notes of those comments you've been saying.
And there was no transportation provided. That's another big issue. Now, I don't know where I was reading somewhere about why are them involved? I mean, I don't know what the way that all came from.
That was a-
Got something to add?
Oh, I know, but that's the whole-
Okay, so let's, um, let's, let's pull this together. All right, I would like to have, first of all, I root for a motion. It sounds to me like the rule of the community is to add an additional teacher.
Well, we should talk about the money for that. You were saying we have to give sixty thousand to the town.
I, I spoke with Kim just before we came in here to see if there's some way. We do have, uh, we have that sixty thousand that we promised to the town, which the town will get, as we promised it to them at town meeting. He stood up there and, I'm gonna do, I'm gonna do it. So, um, but we have that sixty thousand right now, cause we haven't given it to them yet. So we could use that. I asked her to check, to see if we could use that money, which has already been designated. Yes.
Just follow this example. Town voted on a budget of hundred dollars for the fiscal year fifteen, sixteen. But you're saying, yeah, we have undesigned funds there to be used to cover payroll, et cetera, et cetera. That money is there, except it's not part of the actual budget. In order for us to add the position, we have to increase the fiscal year budget. So you need a town vote on that. Which basically you need a town vote. Yeah, we can say we're gonna take the money out of the designated, but we have to have the authority from the town to say that our budget is increasing from a hundred dollars to a hundred and ten dollars. That ten dollars we need for us to save the teacher. So yes, we can do, we can do what you're saying there in terms of, that's where we can find the resources. But the town still has to tell us, yes, you have authority to exceed your budget. Does that make sense?
It, it does, but, um, we've, we've, we've used, we've already used sixty thousand of that towards things for next year.
That's in this fiscal year's budget, fourteen, fifteen, uh, fourteen, fifteen.
And that's what I'm saying. We have sixty thousand dollars in this year's fiscal budget.
I, I follow you, but that's not-
And then we can, when it comes time to give the town their money, we take that out of our undesignated fund and give that to the town. So we already have that sixty thousand dollars.
I follow you. But you follow me from a legal point of view. The budget is approved by the town for a certain amount. You can't exceed that.
Right, but we have sixty thousand dollars left over. We kept sixty thousand dollars.
That's correct. As far, everything she's saying is correct. But you also need to have the authority from the town to exceed the budget that was voted on.
Well, what if we spent that same sixty thousand dollars on computers and everything else that was on our list?
After town meeting.
It's in the fourteen, fifteen budget year. Those things are gonna spend in the fourteen, fifteen budget year.
So let's pay the preschool-
That's the part that-
Pay the preschool teacher that we've already hired out of the thirteen, fourteen, fifteen budget year.
That's the part that Kim, Kim, I talked after you left, and Kim is gonna talk to the auditor. She's not feeling very likely that that's gonna be a legit operation. Now, we can cover like, out of the fourteen, fifteen, like, let's say next month or after July one, there was a teacher workshop day, we had all the teachers in one day. We can cover just a very short couple of early, but a whole year's salary, that's where it gets a little-
We should be able to cover all the equipment.
Yeah, we, yeah, oh, yeah.
All the equipment and this space and-
It's, it's that.
All that part of it, right?
That's the piece I, we can address. The other piece, salary piece.
And if we needed to, um-
So I think we can do what you said, that way. But there still needs to be authority to exceed the budget. Do you agree?
Yeah, I think so. We have to go back to a special town meeting. We do. In order to ever increase, you have to. If you were decreasing, you know.
Does that make sense?
Well, we'll see what Kim, what Kim-
I, I don't know. I guess, I guess it makes sense. Only to me, it really doesn't make sense because we, we had a hundred and seventy thousand dollars. Is that how much we had to begin with? One sixty?
No, one twenty and we split it.
But we already gave them that.
We had already-
One twenty plus the forty five thousand to start the kindergarten.
Right, we had a hundred, around a hundred and seventy something, a hundred and sixty something to begin with. And we had a whole list of things that we could spend that on. And they're not for this year, they're for next year, cause they can be ordered this year and paid for out of this year's budget. That's the difference in it, correct?
Yeah.
Cause we can order it and we can pay for it now.
Yes.
But we can't pay for a teacher now.
Here's a case where if we were thinking that this might happen, we could have done, you know, we created our, our, our home insurance bucket. We could have said, in those years that we have a unusual high enrollment at kindergarten, cause you don't know that's gonna happen until it happens, which is after your budget is generally approved. If we had a bucket that covers one teacher's salary, we would be covered by that. Oh, you wouldn't have to look back because you already have the authority.
It's supposed in October, you have this big influx anyway, kindergarten, and we didn't budget for-
Right, that's what I'm saying.
And we would have to-
You'd have to go back and ask for one?
It's the same thing.
You don't have to, right?
Huh?
Yeah.
You said five percent.
We have plenty of support. But you do have plenty of support for a special town meeting to add a second.
But I don't think we're ever going-
We've never gone back to the town since I've been on the board for additional money. We used to be able to use money out of our undesignated funds. We used to transfer, when I first came on the board, Brian Vila was this superintendent. We needed a, we decided, we figured out we needed a, a small plus. Brian came to a school board meeting and he says, this is what I found, is I recommend that the board authorize twenty five thousand dollars, or whatever it was, to be taken from the undesignated funds for this. And that's how it was done.
I know, but now we have that twenty page policy and have to move on.
What did, what did you do when you had to add a kindergarten teacher a couple of years ago?
Um, well, again, if it's done prior to, we, we-
Was that one prior to the budget?
One year, we actually ended up with an ed tech. It was halfway through the year, we had hit like nineteen or twenty. But it was too far into the year to go to, to do this, to have the hiring. So we gave an ed tech. But sometimes because of needs, um, first of all, an ed tech is more affordable than teaching position. But also if it's a special ed ed tech that you need, a special, then that's a different financial scenario than just right. So that's, I know that was the most recent. You know, before I became principal, I'm not sure I was as attentive to the hiring.
Yeah, I couldn't remember if it was the kindergarten teacher or, um, Brenna, but yeah.
Brenna, Brenna started out as an ed tech?
Yes.
You know, since we didn't actually give the town the money.
She's saying, she went up to the microphone and said-
I know that. But you can probably try to ask and say, now, we have this situation come up. Do we really need it? You know what I mean? Can you do that? Say, we have an unusual situation here because we're offering preschool. Plus, we put all these monies in all these buckets to save all this money. This is why we were able to give this extra money back to the town for the taxpayer, for everybody. Now we find-
Well, we did, we, we, during the budgeting process, we said, if the buckets are approved, we will eliminate that what has historically been driving the undesigned fund up, which is primarily that tuition line. It's roughly a hundred and ten thousand. That happened during the regular.
Right, yeah.
At the end of the year, as of a year, you're either gonna possibly exceed your budget. You should freeze it before you exceed. Or if you have excess, it goes to undesigned and you decide whether it gets returned to offset taxes or it gets used. My understanding of what's taking place, you've given your word to the town, that's all. You've given your word. I would guess, and I don't know, I don't know the specifics of the town politics and all. I would guess they are anticipating using that money to do something with. Now, maybe offset taxes?
Five hundred thousand dollars.
Well, whatever, whatever it is. But I, I think they're probably planning on that. So does that mean that they raid, if they did get that, did they need to ask for another sixty thousand to cover something else? I don't know.
You know, they haven't even got all the specifics on the salt. The town gave them five hundred thousand. They're saying, I'm just saying, they have all this money.
No, but the sixty thousand we're talking about isn't new appropriated funds. It's funds we have.
That's correct. And we, we're asking, what they're really asking is the authority to increase your budget for next year. Not increase your taxes, school based taxes. School, key, key word here, school based taxes. You wanna take the money that is left over from the fourteen, fifteen budget and apply it to a, it sounds like a teaching position, and you increase the enrollment. But you need the authority to expand beyond your current budget.
That I can understand.
So, okay, so what, what we're really looking at here then, we don't really even need to say, we don't necessarily have to use that sixty one thousand dollars.
That's correct.
All we're asking for is the town to allow us to move from our undesignated funds, the amount for the teacher.
Okay.
And it doesn't have to have any effect on what we've given the town, what we have promised the town. Which we will do, yeah.
So with what you just said, you're honoring what you said, the town, which is great. And you're gonna take out of that, your undesigned policy has a certain limit. And we're about in the middle of that limit. You're gonna reduce that middle of that limit a little bit lower. And if at the end of next year, there is additional funds left over at the end of the year, then you would back into, get back into where your range is per your policy. Does that make sense? So we need, I think you need a motion about-
So I need a motion, first of all, about adding an additional pre-K teacher to service all the children of acting on the preschool program, all the four year olds in preschool.
We thought we were gonna have a number.
A maximum.
That's gonna be a sep, that's gonna be a separate motion.
No, for a maximum of sixty thousand, is that what you're saying?
Yeah.
Well, no, she's, here she's talking about the enrollment.
We might, we might need the sixty one, we might not. So we'll just, I think you'll, that'll come up.
Sixty five would probably show it.
A maximum of sixty five?
It'd be legit there. Maybe only forty five would be also a number.
Okay.
Up to, I would say that, up to sixty five thousand for a new pre-K teacher? And that's salary benefits.
And that, no, and that's also salary benefits and equipment.
No, yeah, you do that.
I mean, it's all important.
Okay, I need to stop for a second before I make this motion.
Okay.
Earlier today, earlier today, when we first started talking, we had talked about an additional cost of forty eight thousand dollars.
No, excuse me. That was forty eight hundred and thirty five dollars and eight cents, plus the cost of fictional law, plus the cost of cost. So it's gonna be about fifty eight.
Okay, so that additional cost is just for-
Space.
Just for the, the space.
Little more equipment.
Space and new equipment.
I had to put down forty eight thousand too. It's like, oh, those are nice plots.
And that's on balance.
In that instance, I'd like to make a motion to add a pre-K teacher to service all the children in acting for five days a week.
So we, we, we stick that?
I would like to make, I would like to make a motion to add an additional pre-K teacher to service the children, all four year olds in acting for a five day a week program.
I'll second that, but I want to go to discuss this. I think that we need to put a number in there.
We're gonna, you want, Bob wants- Did you want that to be a different motion or can it be in this?
No, she's, she's talking dollar number, right? They talked to me.
Stupid, because she said all the four year olds in acting.
Okay, so, and Diana, you wanna, Diana, do you want to add to that for a cost not to exceed sixty five thousand dollars?
Sure. For a cost not to exceed sixty five thousand dollars, which would cap our students at thirty two. Trying to get better at this, making motion decisions.
Oh, that's good.
That's a little disgusting anyway.
I think we need a couple of more, uh, let's, let's leave off the thirty two for now.
Okay.
Add, the motion is to add a pre, pre-K teacher to service all acting four year olds. Add, the motion is to add a pre, pre-K teacher to service all active four-year-olds for a five-day-a-week program at a cost not to exceed $65,000. You second on that?
Second, she already said.
Okay.
Who's, Jeanette second, who's first?
Diana made the motion. All in favor? Or no? And now, I, I think we need to add a couple of other things here. One would be that the preschool, we made the motion that the preschool program will not exceed 32 students.
For the year.
Thirty, 32 students for the 15, 16 year, and will be limited to active students only.
I'll make that one.
Okay. Jeanette? All those in favor? And I'd like to see a third motion here, and that would be that parents who enroll their students in the preschool program will be required to commit to a five-day program.
I don't know if we can do that. I don't think we can do that.
Well, why can't we?
Well, that's what we're aiming for.
That's what we're doing.
You can't say you have to commit. Why not?
But I think...
Because parents can do whatever they want. They're the ones driving them here.
Then let them do what they want after, but if we have a rule to begin with, and they choose...
It's going to be in the policy.
It's going to be in, you know...
Right, but deal with it in the policy at that time. Then a parent can make the choice pre. Because, like, if you know all this information upfront, say, these things we were talking about would be in policy, would you maybe make your decision differently? Amy might have made her decision differently.
But I think she did make her decision differently, knowing that we wanted five days. She said, okay, well, that's not what I want to do.
I understand, because it is a tax program. First of all, I want to think, I want to think that it's, 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 it's all children, right? But did you see it, like, going for those five days and saying you're going to make it every single day, because unless you're obviously trying to sell your stuff, because what if there is another child that wants to get in, and that person's holding that spot? I mean, if it gets to that point...
Well, they make it everywhere, the places that kids are going, to daycare or preschool. You know what I mean, they...
But if you do that, then you've got to have also a criteria for when do you kick somebody else? That's why that should be thought of policy.
We'll do that in the policy.
Okay, that'll be a part of the policy, but you know what our intent is. It's going to be expected. I mean, they don't have to write it down and have it notarized, but it needs to be, I think it needs to be...
And I'll make that clear tonight.
In the meeting tonight, it needs to be clear, the expectation is that, that parents who are entering, their kids in this program are entering them for the benefits of a full five-day program.
Can we, in the policy, and you're not doing this, in the policy, can you define it more as the children will commit to a five-day program and be present for 90% of the instructional time offered, because then parents would have the option of picking that up in the afternoon around naptime? Like, I don't even know if that would work.
Well, that's why, that's why we need time to sort that out.
But when they go to preschool anyway, or daycare, don't they stay there all day?
It depends, most preschool programs, Head Start goes 8:30 to 12:30 in the morning.
That's daycare, right?
No, that's Head Start.
Oh, Head Start.
Preschool is often half-day.
I'm talking, huh?
Most, in today's world, most parents do not have the option of half-day. So, your preschool section may be a three or four-hour section of a daycare day. So, you know, you, you can have, some people actually do have a preschool program, and they're not offering daycare. So, the kids are picked up or drop off, and there's a three to four-hour window of the morning, and that's it. And then there are others that have a daycare program and no preschool. And then there are some that have combination. Preschool is this section of an entire day.
Well, you know, I, right at this moment, I, I don't think we can accommodate everybody's needs.
We can't, but this addresses most everybody's needs.
Yeah, well, I think it, I think they just need to know what the expectations are.
Yeah, and I'll make that clear tonight.
And then if kids go to other daycares scattered around, and they're just coming into kindergarten, those kids would also not know each other anyway. So, to me, using the argument that the preschool is moving on with their own friends, really doesn't hold much water, because they've been everywhere, anywhere, and they get on the bus and they meet the buddy, the known one here, right? So, somebody had used, somebody had used that as an argument, I really don't know, but...
I think the, I feel like the options are there for, if we're going to let them come in for the specials, that the options are there to meet the, that they're going to come in with, and if they're in another preschool program, they potentially should be receiving the same kind of curriculum.
Yeah, that's fine, that's not, you know...
Okay, have we taken care of all the motions we need on this now?
I, I think so. I think the rest has to be better than the policy discussion, of which, and that kind of comes, I think it should be some parents that have, I have not been involved with children during the daycare. You guys have been allowed, probably. So, we need someone that's actually doing that issue, that could be part of that discussion. Are you on the order?
No, I was going to, I was going to ask if maybe there were some parents in town that wanted to volunteer some of their time to be on that committee to help us.
Because the policy of that, we don't know the information, we can't make the decision without walking in those schools.
That's true, but we can, we can outline...
You can get an outline first.
We can outline what the expectations are, and then leave a little room for parents to have...
Well, also, at what, I think at the pre-K level, it's good to have parents dedicate an hour, or, you know, sometimes there's a...
Volunteers?
Yeah, volunteering in the classroom.
It's in the preschool policy stating that, in the, well, when you apply it to the state, that parents have to, has to be collaboration with parents and...
No, that's not what I'm talking about. I'm talking about if they wanted to come volunteer part of the day.
Actually coming in to help out in the classroom.
Reading, lunchtime.
Yeah, the reading or something, and then, but, you know, there's also...
Speaker printing.
So, um...
I think you, I think you address the need now, so that we can figure it out.
When that policy, you know what happens when we have a policy. It comes before the board at a, at a regular school board meeting for a first reading, and I think when this one comes before the board on the first reading, then we'll have copies to pass out to share. Usually, we just have them in a book, because you guys don't really usually care about what's in those policies. But I think in this case, we can have policies available, we can even put a draft policy on the website before we do that first reading, so that it's available, so people can look at it, and then, and then you'll have a chance for input at regular school committee meetings. Makes sense to me?
Yeah.
Anything else, anything else?
Not related to, to item two of the agenda, that I can do.
Okay, we're all done with the preschool?
Oh, but there is a meeting tonight at 6:00, an informational meeting here. So, this conversation will be continued with letting people know what the outcome of our votes were and other things to regard to pre.
Okay.
All right, we know it's quick, and we thank you for coming, but we want it done this year, that's why.
We want it done right.
All right, I'll make a motion to go into executive session at 9:25 to discuss MRS-A 405, 6A personnel matters.